Thank you, Kim.
That's everybody, right? Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody. It's December 3rd and I'd like to make a motion to go into public session. If I could have a second, please. Thank you, Catherine. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Wonderful. Thank you so much. And if everybody would please join us by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all
Terrific. Thank you so much, everybody. We're looking forward to a few updates this evening. We're going to have an opportunity to hear an update on our hybrid learning model and to hear about our annual student report card information in addition to the results of a survey administered through Challenge Success last year. I just wanted to begin briefly by thanking our administration and our staff for tireless efforts in recent weeks to perform contact tracing in order to keep our schools safe and to keep our students and staff members safe. We know this has been incredibly time-consuming and a tremendous effort, tremendous coordinated effort on the part of so many people. So thank you so very much for that. We hope everybody was able to have a nice Thanksgiving holiday. We're glad to be together here again tonight. It's good to see you, Sawyer. I think if you're ready, tonight, your student board member report is first on the agenda and we would love to hear from you. I think you're muted at the moment.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, all right. So as 2020 comes to an end, I think it's safe to say that a lot has been learned in the past 366 days. It was a leap here. Looking back on where we all were, one revolution around the sun ago, it would be hard to imagine where we are now. The world has changed in many ways, yet with the 2020-2021 academic year, a degree of normalcy has been returned for many parents and students. Modified classrooms and socially distinct classrooms and virtually attended classes from home feel safe, and with the many options that the district gives its students, productive minds learn once more. Now that we are in the thick of the academic year with the holidays around the corner, let's hope that productivity and learning continue to improve into 2021. In Campus Congress, we had our most previous meeting this last Tuesday on November 30 via Zoom at 4:30 PM. In the meeting, topics of discussion included basic procedural information and a quick review of proposal writing, as well as just a review of some potential proposals that are still in the works. At the high school, several congratulations are in order for students. Firstly, congratulations to the 92 seniors who were recently inducted into John Jay High School's chapter of the National Honor Society. Also, congratulations to the men's soccer team, which recently won the Putnam Northern Westchester Large School Title Game, capping off an unusual season with big success. Also, this past month, a field of honor to commemorate veterans has been displayed in front of the law of the high school, which is really just quite patriotic and nice to see. At the middle school, recent YouTube videos for the JJMS stream series have been a great success and given students a mode to spread positivity and foster a sense of togetherness with fun yet informative publications. Furthermore, a visit from the Callisto Quartet from the Carimore Center for Music and the Arts inspired students in the middle school string orchestra as they explained how several playing adjustments can greatly impact skill and overall music performance. Virtual club meetings at the middle school have been a success and helped to further develop a sense of school spirit and togetherness for students as they explore their common interests. And at Increase Miller, by and large, students are ecstatic about their in-person learning, and this is really across all the elementary schools. Independent reading times throughout grade levels in the school have been enjoyed by students and provide for a relaxing time of literacy practice and development. And on another note, at Increase Miller, students decked out in clothes inspired by the fashion trends of the 1950s to celebrate the 50th Day of School, which is a milestone for any academic year, especially this year. At KES, fifth graders enthusiastically participate in the simulated newsroom, writing about newsworthy squirrel ambushes of the kindergarten class. As students might say, as the students might say in their kind of newsworthy writing style, an eyewitness reported that students had great fun and the classroom buzzed with excitement as news streamed in. Also, festive turkey drawings have been lining the walls of first-grade hallways with each turkey wearing a festive disguise, a clever disguise as well. At Meadow Pond, third graders have been writing personal narratives and practice channeling their experiences as they write and have they put them into written word, which is an impressive feat for such young students. That's about it, but thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That was a fabulous update, Sawyer. We so appreciate your attention to detail and your vivid description of what's going on in the elementary schools, at the middle school, at the high school. You've given us a lot to be thankful for. You've reminded us of how much we have to be thankful for. So we really appreciate that. Congratulations, yes, to all of you who were inducted into the National Honor Society. Thank you for reminding us and to so many of our student athletes, actually. You mentioned several of our teams and it's amazing to think that the fall season has come to an end and our students have really adapted even in that environment, in that arena, and had to overcome teammates quarantining and all kinds of unusual circumstances. And so congratulations to our student athletes. Thank you, Sawyer. That was a great overview. Any questions or comments before we move on? Thank you for setting the stage so nicely. We really appreciate it. I think that brings us to Board Subcommittee Reports, and I'll just pause here for those liaisons from Board Subcommittee who wish to report out tonight, if you've met in between the last update and tonight. Please, Bill, did you want to go ahead?
So we met since the last meeting of the Policy Committee. We're still working our way through the Human Resources wing of the policy manual. There's two policies up for a first read tonight, one about conditional and emergency appointments, which is rather straightforward and actually doesn't get used very much because of the much improved way of onboarding and checking fingerprints and stuff in Albany. And there's one about personnel records. I'd like to work on the wording a little bit for this one, so I'll tell you more about this one probably next time.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Rory, Finance, please.
Thanks, Marjorie. Yeah, the Finance Committee met on November 17. We had a, I think, very productive meeting. We were joined by Paul Christensen, and Paul gave us a lot of good information about both the Lewisboro Elementary School facility and the facility, the former district office at Shady Lane. We reviewed the current usage of LES, and we also looked at the features, I'll say, of the Shady Lane property. We then began to explore options for both of those buildings. I think we documented about five different options, obviously, which we'll continue to review as we move forward with the committee's work. But I think we had a very, very good, a lot of good information provided by the Business Office. Thank you, Danell, and by Paul, as I said. And I think the committee is now looking forward to reviewing the options and figuring out both the costs and the benefits of each of those options. So the work continues, and I feel we made good progress.
Thank you. Anything from Audit or Parent Council? Okay, then I will just briefly mention that the Sustainability Committee met on November 6, and we actually have our second meeting of the year tomorrow morning. And we are talking in part about opportunities to raise awareness around some of the great work that's happening around the district through a conservation mindset or with conservation-mindedness in mind. And if you look in Board Docs at the Board Subcommittee announcements on the agenda, you'll see there's a link next to the Sustainability Committee update to "Nature Lights the Way." And I just thought that I would take a minute tonight to call attention to one of our accomplishments in recent months. And for those of you who haven't had an opportunity yet to see them, these are new lights that are completely off the power grid. They're really interesting-looking wind turbines, also with solar panels. And this was a really terrific partnership between Paul Christensen and our Transportation Director. We had a need for some additional lighting behind the district office, behind the high school. And if you haven't had a chance yet to take a walk back there and to see them, I thought you might enjoy at least seeing them here in this news story. Thank you to Lenore Person for showcasing the lights and also showcasing ways in which our students are already learning from these lights. You see some sixth graders there engaged in scientific observation. So I thought I would mention that. And again, we have our second meeting of the year tomorrow, so I'll keep you posted. If there are no other Subcommittee, oh, yes, please, Catherine.
All right. We have a parent council meeting tomorrow morning, and I did want to thank publicly the parent council. I know that they organized breakfast for the district office, which was so appreciated, and I think it was really nice. They've done such great work for each of our elementary schools, the middle school and high school for thanking the staff. I think it was really nice for them to do that for the district office, too. So thank you to the parent council.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Thank you to parent council, and thank you for the reminder. And I think that brings us now to Board announcements. If there are any additional Board announcements, I'll pause here. And if not, then Andrew, we would love to turn it over to you, please.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Always tough to follow Sawyer's act because he does such a great job. Thank you, Sawyer. Although in some ways leads in nicely to some of the things I want to talk about in terms of the hybrid model tonight. Sawyer did a really nice job of sharing very specific examples of some of the terrific things that our staff are helping our students to do in school. And I did want to start by saying we're hearing a lot of appreciation from both students and parents in response to those efforts. And that's really, really nice to hear and so important for the staff to hear. Parents and students know that we've recently had some surveys out in the community that have just come back in recently. We're just beginning to start to look at those. But I will say, in glancing at the end of those surveys where people had the opportunity to just comment freely, it's really amazing how many expressions of appreciation and gratitude there are. And I want to say thank you to our students and parents for taking the time to say those things and to put them in writing, because again, it means an enormous amount. And we're certainly glad to know that we are having that positive impact in the lives of so many, many students. That's clearly our goal and why we're here. I'm going to present a little bit more of the behind the scenes of what it takes to do that. And I'll start by saying that our staff is currently stretched very, very thin and working very, very hard to accomplish what is being accomplished this year. I think that's evident most currently by the fact that our eighth-grade students are fully remote at the moment because, quite simply, we're running out of staff as the quarantine numbers pile up. Obviously, it's not just students being quarantined, it's staff. And so our goal always is to keep school open to the greatest extent we possibly can. And I think we feel very proud of the extent to which we've been able to do that this year. We work at it, I guess maybe surgically is, if that's the best term, but we try to be as precise as possible. So when we get, the first goal is to cover every class and keep schools open. If we can't do it, if we can just keep one class home and keep everybody else in, we'll do that. If we can't do that, then we'll send one grade level home. So we've done currently. And only as the last possible resort do we close the entire school if we don't have the staffing to do it. But doing that, you know, and this is the part we need people to hear, means that everybody is filling in at every possible opportunity. So while COVID at this point is a full-time, everyday job for our administrators, keeping track of the names, working with the Department of Health, piling up those lists that have to go to them each night, and communicating with all of the families, which is a very high priority for us, for the rest of the staff, it means plugging the holes of all those people who are now have to be home. So there's an enormous amount of work going on, and I think it's very, very important for the community to hear that, to make this happen. And again, we're thrilled that it's being received as positively as it is. And it's also important, I think, to acknowledge that, as we've said throughout, the pandemic perspectives vary depending on the individual circumstances that people are in. So while I'll say that, yes, there's been an enormous amount of appreciation, I don't want to ignore the fact that there are other points of view also, and that for some students who are struggling and the parents of those students, obviously, we hear different things from those folks, and it's important that we acknowledge that, too. And we want you to know that we are doing the very best we can in the circumstances to meet the needs of all. I do now also want to make note of some of the things that not all community members may be aware of that have started to happen more recently in our schools. And I know from, I continue to meet very regularly with superintendents from around the region. There were two such meetings today. And I know that what's happening in our district is very, very consistent across the region. So most, well, not even most recently, in the last perhaps month, those three weeks to a month or so, attendance at our high school has gotten much, much lower. High school parents, I'm sure, know that, but I don't know if other parents around the community do. And again, we know that that's happening around and probably happening for a variety of reasons, whether it's not wanting to be caught up in quarantine, in some cases, just because you don't want to be, because the holidays might be coming up and a family doesn't want to be caught up in a quarantine, or whether it's because an athlete doesn't want to miss participating in games when the seasons were still on. We just heard about the very positive results for some of our teams, and they wouldn't want to miss that opportunity, or other reasons, too. It's happening here, but it's also happening in all other districts we know. We've seen a little bit of a dip at the other levels, a little bit of a dip in the elementary level, but not nearly as much in terms of in-person attendance as we've seen at the high school. And again, that's true in other places. Interestingly, in some places, it's at the elementary level where the attendance has really dropped off in some districts. So there are some things that are unique from one district to another, but everybody is seeing some of this reduction around the holiday season. And it does, and this conversation came up with superintendents today, and we've certainly thought about it a little bit here. It does beg the question of whether there are other ways to allocate staff and space with the attendance patterns changing so much. You know, we know that we've got some families who would like their children to be in school more, and upon hearing this news, we'll wonder, well, if there's lots of other families whose children are not coming to school, does that mean there's room for others who want to come to school more? And does that mean there's staff available? It's something we think about, and I know from today, it's something other superintendents are thinking about, and yet it's also very complicated. And it's a very challenging situation to try to change for a short-term resolution. So if this is going to be the case for the next month, it would take an enormous undertaking to reshuffle schedules and staffing and building locations and transportation and all the other things necessary. And yet, it is still something that we feel an obligation to think about and perhaps an obligation to try to find out from our families whether we should expect this attendance pattern to continue. And I'm going to talk more about that as I get a little bit into quarantining and testing to try to address some of the questions that we've been getting recently. So that kind of thinking, we want people to know, is happening, not to say that it will necessarily come to any kind of resolution very soon. And it's also true, if you paid attention to the governor's press conference at the beginning of this week, I think he would tell us that the real bump in cases from Thanksgiving, we haven't really even seen yet. We're just beginning to, because he spoke about the delay that we would experience after the Thanksgiving of about five to seven days before we really started to see the spike, which is obviously worrying, given that we all know there's been a pretty dramatic increase already. But according to the governor, we can expect that to continue. And we're all guessing a little bit, his prediction is that it'll continue at least into the middle of January, that we can continue to expect to see, which means that our families can continue to expect to see those emails coming home each night. They're talking about new cases that we're finding and then likely new quarantining numbers also, which just all adds to the fragility of the system that we have in place. We will continue doing everything we can to keep our schools open. I want to talk a little bit to testing and quarantining, because these things are obviously very present in our minds at the moment. We are, I think, starting to experience some quarantine fatigue. Maybe it's now coupled with the CDC adjustments that came out yesterday. We want to remind people that although the CDC might change its recommendations, it's only when it gets to the New York State Department of Health, and then when their guidance comes down to the Westchester County Department of Health, until those things happen, you won't see any changes from us in how quarantining is being applied, because those are the agencies that we work directly with and whose guidance we are bound to follow. And we do follow that guidance. I also want people to know that. This is not an independent choice that we're making to quarantine students and staff for the 14 days. That's the decision of the Department of Health, as it should be. I wouldn't want that kind of medical decision on my desk. So we give them the names that we are obligated to provide them based on proximity, and then they make the decisions from there. Just a reminder that when we do learn of a positive case or from a family, we have to look back two days from the date of the test, the date when the test was taken, or two days from when symptoms began, whichever of those comes first. And it's within that two-day period that all of those contacts are developed that we then have to provide to Department of Health. I think also, you're reading more and more about schools being relatively safe, and I think I've said this before in my updates, and I still believe that to be the case. Transmission rates do seem to be very, very low in schools, and that has some people asking, if they're so safe, why do we need to quarantine so many people? Again, I'm not a medical person, but I might ask, is it perhaps because of all the quarantining that we're as safe as we are? So I think you have to look at that from both perspectives. And again, not my place, I really don't think it's my place to debate the medical guidance that we've given. It's my place to follow it. I want to speak a little bit to testing. Again, Governor has now said that if and when we become, he referred just to orange zones in his update this week. He skipped over yellow zones, which is where we were. I hope that's not just harbinger of what's to come, and that we won't have a yellow zone, we'll go straight to orange. But anyway, we know that already the schools in Osning and Tarrytown have begun testing their students, and as a result of the testing that's happening there, they're able to keep schools open at the moment that otherwise would be closed. We don't know for certain whether we'll ever be declared one of those colored zones, but if we are, we have to be prepared. And so we are preparing to test. And in the current guidance, although we haven't seen written guidance, we just have the governor's statements from Monday to go on. If we're orange, we have to test 20% of the population over the course of a month. The guidance speaks to testing weekly. We're hoping there'll be more written guidance to clarify that. So there were some adjustments made this Monday, because previously, those numbers were both higher in an orange zone. Previously, you had to close in an orange zone and then test 100% to come out of it, and then test, I think, 25% every two weeks in order to stay open. So the New York State has adjusted as the pandemic has gone on. Nonetheless, we are gearing up. So what does that mean? And why does that go back to what I mentioned earlier about the current low attendance at the high school? What it means is we're going to want to know from our families what the intention is in terms of school attendance, because those numbers will dictate to us how many students we have to test, if and when the testing begins. And it'll be important for us to know those numbers, because if we don't meet the 20% threshold, then we can't stay open. So we will be reaching out soon to families, both to ask you to let us know your intention around student attendance once again, and we'll also be reaching out to you for your consent to test your children here in school. We'll also be testing staff in school. So please watch for those communications coming up. And certainly, if board members have any questions tonight, I hope you'll ask me about all of these items. And again, whether it actually happens or not, we can't be sure, but we have to be prepared for it, because we want to stay open to the greatest extent that we possibly can. I'm going to start to wrap up here, but I want to talk a little bit about how we're doing, because that was, I think, the goal of this update. I think, you know, what Sawyer spoke about are the things that are most important, the experiences that kids are having at school, the very positive experiences that are there that are keeping them engaged, tell us that we're doing well. I do hear the question quite often, are we falling behind? And we're actually going to, in some ways, speak to that a little bit in tonight's report card presentation. But I do want to say, I think that's the wrong question to be asking. That's a question, although I say it's the wrong question, it's quite certainly a question that's being asked in every school district of the country at the moment. And I think it's the wrong question, because the answer will be the same in every school district in the country at the moment. If one's view of education is as a race to gather as much quantity of content as possible, and if one is worried that we're not gathering as much content as we typically do, then every district is falling behind by that measure. But I wouldn't use that as the measure. And I don't think it's a valuable, helpful question for us to ask. I think the questions to ask are, are our students well? Are they healthy? Are they staying engaged as best we can keep them mentally and actively engaged in school, intellectually engaged in school, so that when we come out of the current situation, they can continue moving forward with their learning in all the really productive ways that we know that they always do. To me, that's what's most important and what I'm most proud of our staff, who are working so very hard to keep our students engaged in school. I said to them in a note today that I don't think it's the right measure, either for you, our staff, or for our students, to ask, are we at the same place today that we would have been at this time last year? We couldn't be, all right? We're not in schools often. We're working through Zoom. It's not the same medium. So I don't think that's a healthy question to be asking right now. The question to be asking, I think, is, are we doing the best we can? Are our students intellectually engaged? Are they cognitively engaged? Are we keeping them healthy and well? And if we're doing those things, then we should be proud of the work that we're doing. We can always do better. We would acknowledge that always, and we keep thinking hard about how to do better. We're still working in ways that are unlike anything we've ever done before. And as I just mentioned, we continue to face new challenges. But I'm very proud of the work that our staff are doing, and I'm thrilled that our community continues to express their appreciation for it. So that's a little bit about where we are in the hybrid. Actually, I do want to say just one more thing, and it goes back to the testing, if and when that happens. We know that we continue to get questions about what's happening on Wednesdays. I want our community to know that we continue to think about it. One of the challenges, or several of the challenges with testing to us will be, we won't want to disrupt learning any more than it's already disrupted. So if and when we have to implement testing, we're going to want to implement it in a way that doesn't take away any more instructional time from our students. We're also going to want to do it in such a way that it doesn't have more impact on one cohort than it does on another. And if you think about it, and we've had some families suggest this to us already, that they suspect, based on when students tend to have their tests done, that it might be having more impact on one cohort than on another. I don't know if that's the case. If it is at the moment, it's something I don't know if that's the case. If it is at the moment, it's something that's outside of our control. But when the testing is in our control, which it might be soon, we're going to want to be very careful that we're not inadvertently impacting one cohort more than the other because of when we decide to test. And a midweek test might have that impact. So we have to be careful about that. But at the same time, as I said, we don't want to, we really don't want to reduce further the amount of time that students are in class or in school. While at the same time, we obviously do have to meet the mandate to do the testing if and when it's required of us. So that's where we are at the moment. It's it's definitely challenging. Staff are stretched, as I said, many people doing jobs above and beyond what they way, way above and beyond what they typically do. And I can't express my appreciation enough for all of that to my colleagues. Thank you all. And if there are questions, please, I'd be happy to try to answer any.
Thank you, Andrew. That was really helpful. We really appreciate your framing of how we're doing and helping us anticipate some of the changes that might be around the corner with regard to testing. And please allow us to just take a moment here to reiterate our gratitude to you and to your entire team for all that you're doing to keep schools open and to keep our students learning and engaged and for monitoring the extent to which they are doing well and and able to continue to learn in the current environment. So thank you for the update and for all that you're doing. I I do think this is a good place to pause if anybody has questions or comments about where we are. I had just one question about the testing, if you don't mind, with regard to where we are in family plans. Can you remind us of the interval of time after which families would now be asked to let us know if they're interested in making an official change from all virtual to hybrid? And also coupled with that, when you were talking about the importance of ensuring that we're testing the appropriate number of students, you know, 20% of X, we need to know what is X. Why wouldn't we plan to test 20% of the number of students who we think are hybrid? Even if some of those students are staying home, you know, wouldn't that be the way to cast the broadest possible net to ensure we are testing enough students and enough faculty to meet 20% of X?
Sure. Thank you for asking those questions, Margaret. Because I definitely want to clarify particularly the first part. We won't be reaching out to families at this point to ask them if they want to change. So I want to clarify that. We're still in the same model from when we last are asked people, and I think that continues, and my colleagues on the screen will correct me if I'm wrong, through the end of January, I think, was the period that we asked them to commit to. And we're still in that period. What we what we think it's valuable to ask people now is if if you've made your own independent decision, if you were someone who was attending, who would, in the previous go around, had said, I'm going to come in person. But now you're choosing to stay home, it would be helpful for us to know that for a couple of different reasons. One specifically having to do with testing. And I'll come back to that in a minute. But the other one goes back to that thing that I talked about earlier, which is we are curious to know if this kind of very low attendance pattern is going to continue for some time. Because it might cause us to think about using some staff and some space differently. Whereas currently, it's on a day to day basis, we can't make any adjustments and we wouldn't even really begin to think about it. So that that's that clarification, I hope. So we're just asking now for people to tell us you're you're still in this model. We're not going to ask you right now to change whether you're in the hybrid or the fully remote or the or anything else, just to tell us if you're if you're choosing to stay at home rather than attend the in person, which is which is the model that you're in, that's what we'd like to know. And when we do put that out in writing, it'll be much clearer than the way I just said it.
And then I'm sorry, but you're seeking to know that between now and the end of January, because the end of January, there would be a formal opportunity to register a change.
Thank you. Absolutely, absolutely right.
Thank you. Okay.
And then the second part of your question is, you know, it's a, it's a good point, you know, we're certainly safer if we just plan to test all. But it's it's right now, it's such a significant difference between testing all versus 20% of all versus 20% of the relatively few students who are coming to school each day, that it might change the way we do the testing. It might allow us to do it in a more efficient way, it might allow us to do it in a less disruptive way. So again, it would be very helpful for us to know if this attendance pattern is going to continue now for some time or whether, you know, people were just doing this to get around the Thanksgiving break. And next week, we're going to start to see the high school hallways be full again. You know, I just, we just don't know.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just ask another clarifying question? So if if parents or families are deciding to keep their children home between now and the holidays break, you you would love it if they reached out to the school district or their school, their principal, their attendance person and say, we will not be going to school.
They don't have to reach out to us because we're going to be reaching out to them and asking them to tell us.
Okay, is there, are any of these students being penalized even though they decided to do the hybrid model? If they decide to stay home, that's totally okay with you.
Correct. We just need to know what's happening so that we can plan accordingly.
And I have one more question regarding the testing. You said that you needed to get consent from parents. What happens if parents don't consent?
Then their children don't get tested. And if we don't reach the 20% threshold, then we can't stay open. But we're not allowed to say to somebody, you can't come to school because you didn't consent to the test. Right? So it doesn't necessarily have an individual impact, but it could could have a collective impact.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Sure.
I think, was that part one of a two part conversation?
I I if you're thinking about the report card presentation, we'll come to that in a second. I do have one other thing I want to just mention briefly. If that's okay.
Thinking specifically about an update on winter sports?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about too.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you.
So again, we got a nice lead into that from Sawyer and a nice congratulations to our soccer team, who really did have a fantastic season. And we also have a women's soccer player who's got an important vote going on at the moment on Lowhood. If you want to go visit Lowhood and participate in that, that would be great. In terms of winter sports, and it really is just a brief check in, everything was postponed by the state to January 4. And by everything, I mean, winter sports have been divided into several different categories, high risk, low risk, medium risk. And at some point, the higher scores were postponed first, and then all of the sports were postponed. So we are still, you know, moving towards towards that date. But also, and I'll say again, the superintendent's meetings today, there was much speculation about whether there would be further announcements to come. At the moment, everybody is singularly focused on COVID and testing and keeping people healthy. That doesn't mean we're losing sight of those sports. We know that we need to be ready for them if and when they arrive, but it's still kind of more in the if category. But we wanted our board to know that we are making preparations to offer both JV and varsity sports in those categories, if again, big if, if they are made available to us by the state. And we'll wait to hear more news as the weeks go by. So I think that's all I had to say about that.
Questions, comments before we move on? Okay, if not, then thank you again for the update. And we're looking forward to a presentation regarding our student report card information and challenge success data. Thank you so much.
Thanks again. So I will, I'll shortly turn over to Mary. And again, just with with the same caveats that I gave before, that this is this school report card is a is a required annual event of school districts. We're required to report some of the state assessment data on an annual basis. As as board and community know, these state assessments were not given last year. So there'll be some slides that I think we moved through even more quickly tonight than we typically would. But we always choose to go well beyond and try to present a much rounder picture of our student achievement because we think we don't really believe in achievement being represented by single standalone tests. We think it's much more, a much broader category than that. So Mary's going to speak to some of those things. But again, with a heavy emphasis on the idea that the greatest achievements of the moment are keeping our students well and engaged. And those are our priorities for now. But that said, I'll turn it over to Mary. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Andrew, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. So this evening, we have lots of data to present. Andrew was talking about a different type of testing, but we certainly have some test results. We have lots of survey data of many different types. So I'll jump right in. But just a big picture look at what we think about when we discuss student achievement. You know, thinking about their, the skill development, whether it's academic skills, social emotional skills, we've had a heavy emphasis on that for a few years now. But even more so this year due to concerns because of COVID and the closures. But wellness and sense of self is something we think a lot about, those foundational knowledge skills that are the underpinnings of all learning, motivation, of course, and then interest, passion, and the development of curiosity. So, you know, it's a big picture look at, you know, all of the things that we think about when we think about assessing students. And of course, we always come back to our learning commitment. This is always at the center, at the forefront of all we do. So we strive to create a learning experiences for all students that are engaging, relevant, and take place in that active learning environment. And we think about intellectual engagement, of course, relevant learning experience and that active learning environment. That has been a challenge this year in a very good way because even in the hybrid or completely remote environment, we want to create a learning environment that continues to focus on these things. And so we've had to find new ways to do that. And you know, I think our teachers have done a terrific job in figuring that out. And our students, of course, have helped us along the way. But just to say that that's always at the forefront of everything that we do. We go back to the learning commitment to guide us. So we're going to start with this challenge success survey data. And I think the most interesting thing to start with is the timing there. So you'll notice it's February, March of 2020. So when I was looking back at the exact dates, our parent survey was first sent out on February 25. And the student surveys were given actually the week of March 9, which was the last week where you were in school prior to the shutdown. If you remember that Friday, the 13th, we were closed for professional development, thinking that we'd return on Monday and did not return. So it's kind of interesting from the student perspective. This was all right before our extended closure happened. And for the parent survey, kind of a mix of before and during, I believe, the parent survey closed right before what would have been our typical spring break, if it was April 3. So, you know, we did have significant participation in the survey. So thank you to everyone who did participate. When you look at middle school students and high school students, that was done in schools. So obviously, those numbers are higher, but we still had a significant number of parents as well in each category. And these are some of the categories of survey questions. So you can see there, you know, looking at things that are very much related to the overall student experience, so social emotional well being, things like stress, sleep, you know, how much support we get at school. But like the learning commitment, engagement is a really important piece here. But even very practical things like homework load, habits, extracurriculars, how parents and families think about those things, values, even how college and the college process impacts. So I will say that we'll present some of this data this evening, but we will revisit it and present more of it when we meet again around social emotional learning in January. Because I think it has relevance for both presentations. So this first slide is around major sources of stress, so broken out by middle and high school students. So you can see that grades, tests, quizzes, finals, those kinds of things are noted as the most stressful for both middle and high school students as well as overall workload and homework. But then things vary a little bit. So middle school students are thinking about a lack of time to play, relax, or just be with family and friends. Maybe there's a specific class that's stressful for them and sometimes a lack of sleep. And for our high school students, procrastination or time management, which of course relates to workload as well. Also, sleep is something that is stressful for them, not getting enough sleep and thinking about college and the future. These were the top five stressors as related by our students. And then we look at homework. You know, it was interesting when we spoke with the people from Challenge Success, actually, a few weeks ago, we were going over our results and how, you know, they relate in terms of what they see across the country. They do these surveys nationally. And they said, you know, it's interesting that our parents and students are very closely aligned in terms of their perceptions of how much time students spend on homework, which isn't typical. So that's a very good thing. They were a little different in terms of thinking around how much is too much. So the students feeling like it's a little too much and parents, not as many parents feeling that way. And another piece was extracurriculars and free time. So you can see from that first row, the percent of students who didn't report participating in any extracurriculars was quite low, 5.7% for middle school students and 4% for high school students. But then the average hours spent during the week on those things, you know, between 5.6 and 7.6, and then over the weekend, about another three hours. It was really nice to see the top three reasons. The number one reason for both groups of students was to have fun. For middle school students, it was to learn and build skills, and for exercise or health, to learn and build skills was also important to our high school students, but the addition of college admissions was another factor for or reason for participating in extracurriculars as well. And then, you know, we just thought this sleep was interesting, and I think this is consistent nationally as well. The recommended amount of sleep for middle schoolers is 10 hours per night and high schoolers nine. So our middle school students were reporting 7.8 and their parents reporting 8.8. And then the high school, a little less, 6.8 and 7.7. So seems like parents thought there was maybe one more hour of actual sleep going on. But again, they were very closely aligned in speaking with the Challenge Success representatives who spoke with us about our our results. And and this was a nice piece that they pointed out as well was actually probably higher than most other schools. The percent of students who feel they have an adult at school, they can go to if they have a personal problem. So you can see 70 and 69%. They felt that was pretty high. So it was nice to hear that most of our students did feel there was someone they could go to. And as you can see, they identified a few of those people who they might be if they went to someone at school about a personal problem. This next slide is about engagement. And again, that's, you know, part of our learning commitment. So this is why this has been really interesting for us to think about, and we'll certainly be thinking more about it. They think about engagement in three different ways, behavioral engagement, cognitive engagement, and effective engagement. So, you know, the behavioral engagement is kind of going through the motions. And you can see below, they have that broken up by percentages in terms of what they call doing school, right? So the the students who do all the things they're supposed to do, and that's pretty high. But then cognitive engagement, thinking about, you know, that intellectual engagement, but then also effective engagement, how you're feeling about your learning. So just to give you a little flavor of some of the questions that were asked. For example, for behavioral engagement, how much effort do you put into schoolwork? How often do you try as hard as you can in school? How often do you pay attention in your classes? How often do you complete school assignments? And then cognitive engagement, how often do you think schoolwork is useful preparation for college? How often do you find value in what you do in your classes? How often do you think schoolwork helps you deepen your understanding or improve your skills? So different types of questions related to these different things. So this will be interesting to dig into further to really think about helping our students to be fully engaged in all ways. So of course, you know, our students So of course, you know, our students are wonderful and, and we want them to not just comply, but to really be intellectually engaged. And that's our ongoing challenge in terms of helping students to learn as deeply as they possibly can. So Challenge Success has this framework, they call the space framework. And this is how they frame looking at the data and looking at changes. So just to frame how we might be looking at that down the road in the future. The S is for student schedule and use of time. P is for problem and project based learning. So thinking about, you know, research projects and learning in a different way that hopefully is more engaging. The A is for alternative and authentic assessment. So, you know, a lot of discussion about assessment this evening and ongoing discussion about assessment. So, you know, we've been talking a lot with our faculty over the last two years and specifically more this year about different types of assessment. So formative assessment that informs instruction. And then summative assessments that usually come at the end. And those are the, the types of assessments that are usually graded and that's kind of that end result. But, you know, focusing more, especially during COVID times on formative assessment. I've heard it phrased as assessment for learning rather than just assessment of learning. And I think that's really critical here because we want students to learn more. So for example, if they're getting feedback while there's still an opportunity to improve that final performance or that's final grade, that is much more meaningful than just getting feedback with a grade at the end. The research says that students don't pay as much attention to that. So it's helpful for us to think about that and inform our instructional practices. But also going back to the framework that C is for climate of care. So creating that caring environment where students feel those personal connections, where they feel safe enough to take those academic risks and hopefully connect to classmates and to adults in the organization. And then the final piece there is education for the whole community. So Challenge Success is really focused on the whole community for our community members, our faculty, our students, talking about the definition of success and thinking about it a little bit differently. So maybe it's not the traditional measures of success only that we think about, but thinking about the whole person and what that means to be successful. So as I said, we will revisit Challenge Success next time. Or it's actually not next time. It's January 14th, I believe, is when we are slated to talk about social and emotional learning. So we'll include more of the data at that time. So we'll jump into some of the assessment data. So how we use assessment data, you know, our goal is always to improve instruction and learning. So reports range from individual student reports for parents to district wide reports like this one for all of you and for our community. So, you know, these are some of the things that we ask ourselves when we look at any type of data and, you know, really thinking about our curriculum, our teaching strategies, what kind of professional learning might be needed in order to improve things? And then what resources do we need to improve instruction in these areas? And then, of course, how do we use it? What actions do we take? We look at multiple measures. So as you'll see tonight, you know, some of the survey data along with test data of different types. We study it, we put supports in place, try to determine areas of curriculum and instruction for focus, consider different research based practices. You know, we'll discuss those goals with all members of our faculty and then explore the resources and professional development as well. So talking about New York State assessments, and these are the four performance levels. So these slides are really just slides from last year. They're just reminders because as I'm sure you're all aware, the New York State assessments were not given last year. So because of COVID and the closure, we were not able to give that. It was true statewide. So this is just a reminder. I'll just go through these very quickly. But when we talk about proficiency, the four performance levels, we typically look at levels three and four. The state calls level two partially proficient. So there, when we think about things like AIS, usually there is a scale score cutoff that's somewhere in the middle of level two, not exactly in the middle always, where the state feels there's a cutoff where students are actually still on track for meeting graduation requirements and achieving state standards by graduation, but that varies a bit from year to year. And, you know, the state did warn against those year to year comparisons. So we look at trends and the bigger picture. We don't over emphasize changes from one year to the next. And this was just a reminder when we had this last year too, that this, the test did change to a two day untimed test from a three day timed test. And so they're saying anything before the year 2018 should it be compared to 2018 and beyond. So that's just a reminder. So these, as I said before, these were posted last year, but just a reminder of our scores here in purple in the district. And then against New York State scores, obviously you can compare how we're doing according to New York State. So based on state averages, most of our scores are solidly above. Of course, we always look to do better. So that's something that we're always thinking about how we might do better. These are the math scores, our ELA scores. These are some of our rankings within, you know, the state, Westchester, Putnam, Northern Westchester, Boses, and our comparable districts. We get this data from a site that we subscribe to called School Meter that provides its service to districts in the area, in the region. And just to keep in mind too, as we look at any of those state results, there was a significant number of students who opted out in the past few years. So when, you know, we look at those numbers, just to keep in mind, for example, in 1819, you know, based on the test, 13 to 15% of the students actually didn't take the test. Whether they were students who would fall in that category of three or four or one and two, that's really hard to say. But just to keep in mind that those students are students we don't have data for. One thing that we thought might be interesting to share this year is the results of some of our AmesWeb plus testing that we do. This is part of our, one of our universal screeners that we give to all of our students in the beginning of the year. We just thought it was interesting to look back and say, how different, you know, with this notion, as Andrew mentioned of, are we falling behind? Are students starting the year in a very different place than they have in prior years? So we just looked at this fall and last fall. And, and these numbers are students who fell in the average, above average or well above average range according to national norms on AmesWeb. So it's reassuring to see that it wasn't very different from the prior year and just at a glance at looking at years before that, there hasn't been real significant change in our overall numbers. So again, this is something we take a closer look at. Typically, we look at this more for individual students. But in the absence of New York State test data, we thought it might be interesting to share this as well this evening. So some other ways we monitor student progress. So in addition to AmesWeb, you know, it varies by level. So at our elementary schools, we've been giving the Teachers College Independent Reading Inventory consistently to students in grades K through five. Kindergarten students don't have the test administered in the fall. We start in the middle of the year with students who are ready to read. But by the end of the year, we have an independent reading level on all students. This year, we have also given, as I think I mentioned at a prior meeting, the Hegarty Phrenemic Awareness Assessment. So that's something else that gives us a sense of students readiness skills that just in kindergarten and first grade. So it gives us another view of reading and, you know, that helps us to know students that we might be particularly worried about if phonemic awareness is an issue for them. There's a letter ID assessment at those early grades as well. And we also give the Teachers College Reading Assessment. This year, we started giving it at middle school for students who were being considered for additional support services. So many of our teachers were giving that there too. But at the secondary level, there are local assessments that are given by department. So for example, at middle school, we have a common ELA assessment to give the teachers a consistent view of what students look like across the grade. So there are many other measures. I'm sure I'm leaving a few out. Some are curriculum based, some are benchmarked types of measures, some are standardized. AmesWeb is the only one that's norm referenced that we give to all students. There are some students in smaller populations who might have some other assessments as well. So just to take, that was a look at three through eight, but to think about high school. So our graduation rate remains strong. And that's a picture of graduation at the Jefferson Valley Mall last year. It looked a little bit different than previous graduations. Graduation rate is slightly lower, but not a significant change. And then these are some of our Regents exam scores. So again, they're, the June tests were not given. We give a very small number of January tests, so we, that wasn't comparable to what we typically report. So they're not listed there. So we don't have new data on Regents. But these were our rankings. So when we last reported, I believe it was last November as well, we reported on 2018 rankings. So the 2019 had not yet been published. So these are the rankings for 2019. So these are something, it's not a new test, but we do have a new report to show you this evening. And then we have our National Merit Scholarship finalists from last year. So we have an updated version there or an updated picture. We have Jessica Leff, Joanna Schechter. Think about our advanced placement tests that were given. So this was interesting. The tests were administered online and were optional. And it was interesting looking at these numbers. So these are the numbers of students who took, 391 students took 762 AP exams in the prior year. The numbers were very close, 404 students took 885 exams. So it was, you know, not very different. So if students were enrolled in an AP class and planning to take the test, they typically took the test. And we continue to have a number of students who were recognized as AP scholars with honors, with distinction and national scholars as well. We're very proud of our students and the hard work they did. And this is just a breakout of the different AP exams that were given. Most of them, this slide, there are 10. I think two of them are lower than the national average. Most of them are higher than the national average. So, you know, we always take a close look at those things and try to discern why that is. Sometimes we have the better answer than others. You know, we do focus a lot on the instruction and not the end results. So, you know, it's something we continue to look at. So it's not that it's unimportant to us. It's just, you know, part of a bigger picture. So we continue to look at those. And then we look at extracurricular participation at the secondary level. So this is, you know, just a reminder, this is something from the School Superintendents Association. They look at some research based mess, metrics to appropriately assess that students are college and career ready as well as life ready. And their key takeaways from their research was that the value and importance of community service in building leadership and increasing the likelihood of college graduation and the importance of workplace learning experiences in creating smoother transitions to college in the workplace. So when we think about all of our extracurricular activities, you know, it has lasting effects and importance for our students. So we give these surveys. So these are all self-reported numbers. You can see that we continue to have very good participation in these surveys. I did speak with Christian McCarthy. So, you know, when you have a self-reported number, sometimes the way people interpret the numbers is part of the, you know, how you have to look at the data. So we don't actually offer a lot of school sponsored athletics. So those numbers are higher than they should be. So we assume that students are interpreting that as, do you participate in any athletics? So it includes athletics outside of school as well as inside of school. But it's, our students are very involved. They have lots of interesting things going on. And that's also consistent with some of the Challenge Success survey that you saw earlier. And we'll take a closer look at in January as well. So this is our middle school students and our high school students. And Christian did share with me some numbers. So for example, 950 students in high school participate in some kind of high school athletics. Some of that is double counted. It's not individual students. Some of the same students participate in more than one sport. But still, these numbers would indicate that that's much higher. So the students are interpreting that question a little differently. So we'll look at that for next year and think about changing the language. But it seems that looking back at past surveys, they interpreted similarly in prior years as well. So it was not something new. But you see lots of clubs, community and volunteer work. As you can see, as students get closer to 12th grade, the number gets higher and higher. So it's nice to see that we are having that kind of participation. Of course, we'd like to see even more in some of, some of these areas as well. And we have 14 Scholar-Athlete Team Awards. So this requires a GPA of 90 or higher for 75% of the team. So last year, this was 22, but that's part of the reason for the drop is that we didn't have spring sports last year. So there were fewer opportunities to get that recognition, but we're very proud of all our teams and all of our scholar athletes and the hard work they do balancing both sports and academics. And so annually, we give a senior survey to help us get a sense of how our seniors viewed their experience at John Jay High School. And then we also give an alumni survey to students who graduated in the prior year to get their perspective after their freshman year in college. So we'll start with the senior survey. And despite this being during COVID times, we still had very good participation. I believe this was given in May. We had 201 students. So during the last two years of high school, about how many hours did you spend in a typical seven day week doing each of the following? So again, you know, hearing about all of these self-reports, it's, you know, you're seeing a consistent theme that students are doing a lot outside of school. It was interesting when we spoke with the Challenge Success people, the amount of homework that was given. One of the things they mentioned, they felt it was quite reasonable compared to some other schools when they, you know, look at that nationally. But that students, a lot of students felt that they were overloaded. And one of their wonderings was because they're doing lots of other things in addition to the homework. And in some cases, that means traveling to another practice and, and back home again, and maybe starting homework later, does it just feel like a lot? So it's, you really have to look at all of these things in concert with one another and not just in isolation. But we certainly have some very involved students, which is nice to see. And this looks at how involved were you in the following activities at John Jay High School? So you can look at this data across years. It's interesting. We have some ups and some downs. So it's, then this is just students who reported being somewhat involved or very involved in these activities. And then we ask the students to rate the quality of instruction and particularly level of intellectual engagement in the following areas. So those who rated these as good or very good. And again, some ups and downs, you know, one wondering we had is since students were completing this survey in the middle of COVID, when they're in the middle of COVID, when their senior year was quite interrupted, might that have had some impact? But I think our students have been really honest and we really look at this critically to say, you know, how can we improve the student experience? What are we doing really well? And then what could we do better? So I think more and more, we're looking to our students to help inform us about our practices and help us know what we can do better. This is one helpful piece that's been in place over years. And again, you know, you see some consistency again with other surveys, Challenge Success and the other surveys. So, you know, my classes give me useful preparation for what I plan to do in life. Some of these things, you know, my high school teaches me valuable skills. An adult at John Jay High School has helped me plan for life after high school. So it's kind of connected to the connections piece that we saw earlier. Working hard in high school matters for success in the future. So, but we are happy to see that 94% say, I'm getting a good education at KLSD. Last year, it was a little bit higher. So we're always hoping for that to be 100%, of course. And this is where students are talking about their teachers. Most teachers I had for class at John Jay High School make school interesting, prepare their students, pay attention to all students, really care about me. That's a very high number there. So you can read all of these descriptors. But I think we do see this trend that students feel connected to their teachers and feel that their teachers can help them. And I think that's a really important piece and a credit to our faculty. And then how satisfied are you with your high school experience? So very satisfied, somewhat satisfied. So we have about 81%. Year before, we had 88%. So again, we want to work to get that even higher. So all students feel satisfied with their high school experience or their entire experience. And again, you know, we were interrupted last year with internships, but we did have projects that students did. And so this was really interesting. Lots of students did participate. I actually checked with Marissa Merlino. And 218 out of 230 students worked on a senior project last spring. So even though they were at home during COVID, they were working on some of these independent projects, which were really nice. And they really varied. One was writing a children's book. I have them listed here, sorry, one second. Assisting with a local election campaign, constructing a log cabin, learning American Sign Language, silversmithing and making jewelry, woodworking, sorry about that, AutoCAD design, computer coding with Python and real estate sales and agent licensing. So a wide variety of projects that our seniors did work on last year. So we hope to get our senior internship up and going in hopes that next year is more typical. And hopefully, we can do something like it this year as well. And just a few stream highlights. And again, when we say stream, we think about science, technology, research, engineering, arts and mathematics. So we had the Bedford 2020 Green Light Competition last year. That was mostly virtual. We had the elementary and middle school science fairs. Most of them did take place. I believe Meadow Pond was the only school that was canceled due to COVID. We had the first FTC Excelsior Robotics Competition. The Math Counts Competition, the Westchester Rockland Science and Humanities Research Symposium. That was something that was hosted at John Jay High School. So there were still lots of things that happened last year. I should note that the middle school students participated in math counts, but their second competition, MoMath, was canceled because of COVID. So things were going really, really well. And we hope that many of these things will continue this year. And I know a lot of these organizations are finding new ways to do things virtually. So it doesn't mean that things necessarily have to end if we're still experiencing lots of constraints around meeting in person. And so in terms of our performing arts, our freshman play was Revenge of the Space Pandas. Our fall drama, Can't Take It With You. We had our spring musical unfortunately was canceled. Our one-act play festival was canceled. Our middle school play, two works by William Shakespeare, Julius Caesar and the Comedy of Errors. But the musical, Mary Poppins, one performance did take place just for family members. That was right around the increase in COVID cases. And of course, we had our NISMA ensembles, all county, all state. There were winter concerts. The spring concert, unfortunately, the Spring Music Festival was canceled. There's some pictures from our wonderful visual arts program. We have some very talented artists in our school. So we're very thankful for that and they inspire us all the time. And now we'll go to our graduate survey results. So again, this is given at the end of the freshman year in high school. So we had 65 students participate last year. The prior year, it was a little higher, I believe it was 91. But it's really helpful for us to hear from our students and how they're thinking about their education in Cottona Lewisboro after having experienced college for that first year. And, you know, it was a strange second half of their freshman year, to say the least. So things that they found very challenging, challenging or somewhat challenging or not challenging at all. So you can see that managing stress is, you know, was one of the biggest challenges and managing their time. So all of that independent management of workload with lots of independence that perhaps has been something new and different for them is something that they're finding challenging. So that's interesting to us. How prepared were you to do the following, your academic work at college? So some of our highest numbers, our highest number there is working effectively with others. So we have been focusing more on collaboration in the past few years. So that does seem to make sense to us. Learning effectively on your own is another high point. But, you know, of course, we also see this as a place where we can improve. So we'd like to see even more students feeling very prepared or prepared at least in all of these areas. And then what my high school did a good or excellent job at, you know, and these, you can see the 2018 results alongside the 2019 results. And, you know, most of them are higher. This one, teaching me to write college-level research papers is a little bit lower. So that's something for us to think about. That was a little surprising for us to see. And then at the end, how satisfied were you with your high school experience now looking back with different eyes? So the numbers were a little higher there, about 83% were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied. But again, it's something that we always strive to be a much higher number than that. But we look forward to having more conversations with our students. I think, you know, the importance of hearing from students. I know we just did a student survey recently. It's really important to hear their voices about their experience. We're particularly interested right now, you know, and different students are, sometimes it is very different by level, but sometimes just by individual student, the perspectives can vary greatly. But it's really helpful for us to hear that and see patterns and trends. But keep in mind that every student experiences school differently. And I think that's especially important right now. So I know that's lots and lots of information in a very short period of time. So I will open it up to you for questions.
Mary, please allow us first to thank you for compiling so much information. I just want to start by saying how fortunate we are to be able to experience such a multi-dimensional overview of how our students are doing. I know we sometimes talk about some of the New York State requirements, setting the floor for our aspirations and all that we hope to provide for students and obviously not the ceiling. And especially at a time when we really aren't even able to administer some of the New York State assessments. We really are fortunate to have all of this information available to us to help us gauge how our students are doing. And we also really appreciate the framing that you and Andrew both have provided tonight in terms of what we're emphasizing and the importance of thinking about the whole student, the opportunity to hear from our students through a variety of tools. This Challenge Success data is really interesting to see. It's somewhat fortuitous that we had just administered the test, I guess, right before the pandemic. I can't help but want to ask if they would let us just do it again one year later so that we could capture some important experiences that students are having in these unprecedented times. But in any case, thank you so much. This was really a tremendous amount of work, I'm sure, and really helpful to be able to see, especially, you know, at a time when students are experiencing a lot of new circumstances and we really want to know from the administration how they're doing. So thank you for helping us to see that. I'm going to pause because I'm sure that my board colleagues have other comments and questions, but also just to mention that for members of the community who are waiting patiently, we will very soon turn our attention to public forums. So please, if you have questions about this evening's presentations or other items pertaining to the district, we invite you to consider using the Q and A at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We ask you to please just let us know who you are. We're not able to read any anonymous comments. We appreciate knowing where your kids are in school here in the district, at what level of the district or in which buildings. And again, thank you for your patience and we look forward to hearing from you in just a few minutes. And with that, I'm going to pause and open the floor for comments and questions, please. Would somebody like to start?
Yeah. I'll start.
Thank you.
Never had trouble inserting my opinion places. So first, absolutely wonderful, I think, I'll get to the results in a second, but just the act, I can't see Alice. I'm not sure if she's as getting misty-eyed as I am because this is old work that we did. But I think it cannot be overemphasized that the willingness to survey your students, both seniors and graduates, is the level of commitment to improvement and reflection. I think that's actually a good model for the students themselves. And a lot of organizations wouldn't do that. I'm sure a lot of high schools don't do that. And then for a, absolutely an organization that uses many ways to assess. This was very clear here. There were test scores, there was lots of things in there, you know, all types of activities. And like Marjorie said, it's just, I get tired of seeing all that, let alone doing all that. It's just very impressive. And then, you know, getting 95-plus students to say, I'm getting a good education at KLSD. I think, assuming this was an honest survey, you weren't paying them, remarkable, remarkable number. And then the teacher scores, you know, teachers who care about me, teachers who know me, teachers, I think they're going to be fair. I shudder to think what the numbers would have been in my high school if the question was, do you think the teachers are fair? And it was our problem, not their problem. And then just 80-plus percent satisfied, you know, or very satisfied with their high school experience. I think that's remarkable. And like you said, there's always room for improvement. There's always, you know, why isn't it 100? But I just, I think we should have to pause and just appreciate what those numbers are. And to get it from a class that lost their spring of their senior year that way and to get participation, I think is, it sort of shows a level of health, I think, of the district. The willingness to undergo this exercise and take its messages seriously, I think, is remarkable. With all that, having been through this many times, I do notice patterns in scores or things that are higher than other things in terms of satisfaction or test scores. And it sounds like it's certainly the case, but my question or comment would be that a pattern is looked at and then addressed and either decided that, you know, there's more important things than the test score because we're doing other things with this, with this time. Or gee, maybe, you know, we have to reevaluate what the curriculum is because it seems like it's not, you know, what's on the test type of thing. So I want the main emphasis to be all the good things that I've talked about. But just this idea that if there's, the reason you do things like this is to look for patterns, not one year bumping around, but are there consistent patterns that are out of keeping with everything else? And that would sort of be the, one of the net outcomes of this that would make it worth doing.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, we do look closely at that. We have such a large amount of data here that sometimes it's difficult. You can feel like you're drowning in it a little bit. So it's helpful to have multiple measures, but it can also water things down. But I think, you know, to your point, you know, when we see patterns over time that are concerning or that are, you know, numbers that are lower than we might like them to be or expect them to be, we have to ask questions. And so as you alluded to, one of the questions is, you know, is this assessment, for example, something we value? Is it assessing what we think it's assessing, hope it's assessing, is it a good match? Is there some reason? Do we need to think differently about a test, a course, a curriculum? So I think all of those things are things that we investigate and need to investigate more. So, you know, that's where it's really helpful. You know, our instructional leaders have been very helpful in this because they're closest to the work, right? So sometimes getting into kind of the nitty-gritty and thinking about, so why might that be? And sometimes something on the surface might look one way or the other. And yet, when you dig a little deeper, you find there are more complications to the story. So it's something we need to continue to do.
Absolutely. Thank you. But just well done and congratulations.
Thank you. I'd also, just to say, I didn't say this before, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the many people who helped with this. So, you know, in our technology department, Amory Pesavento in particular, Jeannie Stein, who helps me, Lenore Person, some of the pictures that we have, it really is a team effort. Marissa Merlino, Christian McCarthy. So lots of people helped to contribute. So it's not just me for sure. So thank you to all my colleagues.
Thank you. Catherine, please.
Mary, I want to say thank you too. I love these kinds of surveys and I love seeing the results. And I think that it's amazing, the participation that you guys have received. I now have three children who have taken the senior study and two who have taken the graduate study. And I'm, and they really appreciate it and they feel heard and they feel, you know, they feel recognized. And so whatever you're doing, the fact that kids are coming back a year later and they're responding to surveys, I'm so appreciative. And you should feel so good about yourselves that these students recognize that you're listening to them. And I hope that carries through to our younger students. I appreciate you sending out another survey. I think you mentioned to students in the coming days.
We actually just sent one, yeah.
That's great. I just, you are clearly making a message. The message is very clear that students, you want students' opinions. And I think that's why we're getting such high percentage marks of people feeling that, that they're successful, that their time at KLSD is successful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Rory, yeah, please.
Thanks, Marjorie. Yeah, Mary, of course, I echo what my colleagues on the board have said. This is really, it's wonderful, not only to gather the survey data, but now to have sort of a trend of that data benchmarked back to 2015 that we can compare ourselves to see how things are moving. It's kind of a brave endeavor to set out and ask your students how they feel about the school. But it really is an opportunity for self-reflection and to make sure that we're tweaking the dials as necessary for those areas that maybe we can identify. But really a wonderful job overall and thank you. There's two things on my mind as I go through it. One is, when I looked at the list of the internship companies that are on there, I just want to give those guys a big shout out. It's almost every company that's in the Cottona Lewisboro district. And it really is wonderful that they provide opportunities for our students through internships. So I think that that's something worth calling out. And then I noticed, and it was the same trend last year, and Bill called it out last year, and I'm going to be the bad guy and call it out this year. There are a couple of areas that really seemed There are a couple of areas that really seemed on the instruction quality metric to be quite low, that I feel ought to be quite high, the first being computer tech and the other being business. This was the same last year. I also noticed that students who responded to the not prepared for college using computer technology was the two, the highest percentage in the two lowest categories. So there's something there that really needs to be tweaked. And I don't, I guess, my question is, what are the next steps here? Maybe back to the point that Bill was making, we, some of these things should be actionable, and we should be looking at, okay, there's a few things that are really, really good, there's a few things that are average. And then there's a couple of things that, to me at least, really stand out that probably need, we need to take some action. And I just wonder, do we establish committees, do the instructional leaders work looking at these metrics and put plans in place to try to drive change for next year? If we see ourselves at 30% last year, 31% this year, are we striving to get that up to 50% next year or 80%? And sort of what is the process around that? So I'll just leave that with you, but I think overall, this is a phenomenal, I look forward to this. It was wonderful last year, I'm delighted that we went through it again this year. And so thank you, really great job overall. Yeah, definitely a couple of little concerns there around computer science and business also.
Yeah, it's interesting, Rory, and I appreciate your, your comments. You know, even looking at future courses, for example, you know, we were looking at that today with the high school to think about, you know, what computer science courses we offer, is it enough? It's, it is really interesting that some of the things we think would be really popular courses are not as popular as we think. And then we see numbers like that. And we also know that a lot of students participate in, you know, different computer science learning outside of school as well. So I think, you know, getting our arms around like the why, why is that number low? Why, you know, if we're offering courses, why aren't they filling up with that number being low? And then, you know, how can we come together? Maybe we're not communicating well enough about what our needs are, maybe, you know, thinking about the students, the families along with us, what could we do differently to fill that gap? So that's something that definitely stood out, so yes.
Thank you, I appreciate the consideration. Thanks, Mary.
Sure.
Can I ask a question about some of the challenge success process? So what's the frequency that we do that survey?
So we didn't commit anything beyond this first go-round. I believe the people at Challenge Success said it might be helpful to do it in another, you know, two years. I don't know if because of COVID, that might be a little bit different. But they do help us to benchmark against all of the others. So they do this nationally, so I should have said earlier, it's a nonprofit organization that's associated with Stanford's University Graduate School of Education. And they've been doing this for a number of years, so it's given to, you know, high school and middle school students around the country. So it helps us in that way to kind of benchmark how we're doing. But I think it is helpful to give it again at some point. And the other thing that we want to think more about that we really haven't had a chance to yet is what we might do about what we've learned so far. So they have some resources that might be helpful to us. And this is where we need to do a little more thinking and planning about that, like that space framework. What might we act on, you know, thinking about assessments, what might be a little bit different? Some of the things we've been thinking and talking about already. But that might give us the impetus to take more action or think more clearly about the best actions to take.
Thank you, and I guess I was asking, I think it's interesting that they actually have a, some kind of compilation of scores that determine engagement, and I think we've talked so much about the engagement piece of the learning commitment, that I think it would be helpful if they allow you to, you know, take certain parts of the test more frequently. I think it would be helpful to see that data perhaps as we move forward, especially with everything that's been happening with COVID, just to understand, you know, what impact has that had on engagement? If we need to remain in some kind of hybrid environment over time, or remote environment even into next school year, I think it would be helpful to understand those numbers. So, I just, again, I'm just more, I'm familiar with an organization called the Search Institute, which does a similar type of thing, and then they have, they have opportunities for professional development related to sort of what the outcomes are, so assume that the town's success does similar, which is great. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, that was a really, really well put together and really informative presentation. So thank you for that. And then also, I, speaking to the more recent survey that you sent out, I believe it was last week, I just wanted to say that I think it was pretty fascinating to see the amount of responses that you got with students pressing reply all and thanking you. I think it was over 100 emails that I got, and they kept popping up on my phone throughout the day while I was just doing my work.
We're sorry about that.
No, 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 but I think it really speaks to, I think it speaks to two things. I think it speaks to first, the grace of our students and of the students in the district, and the fact that they, they really were appreciative of what you're doing. And then also just the fact that people really do feel heard with these surveys. Because I think that, at the high school especially, in our campus congress meetings, an issue that's been talked about a lot and discussed in our open conversations has been the, the condition of Wednesdays and what will happen moving forward. But with that survey that you gave us last week, I think that many students really did feel heard and appreciated and that their viewpoints mattered and that you cared about our wellbeing overall. People were appreciative of it, so thank you.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
Do you anticipate that the recent survey will help you gauge what's happening at the high school and what we might be able to do differently to influence attendance? You know, just hearing some of the conversation earlier regarding other aspects of the survey data that we've received, where you were explaining, Mary, that, you know, sometimes we need to look at a situation and think about, what are students getting outside of school? What are they getting in the classroom? And how do we understand the phenomenon and figure out what we could be doing differently to meet students' needs? You know, in addition to asking students prospectively, like, what might your plans be between now and the end of January? Are you planning to come back to your hybrid model or not? Are we also in a position to better understand what's driving the behavior? Will that survey data help you with that? And in addition to that, will the survey data help us to gauge how we're doing with respect to some of the other questions that we were talking about much earlier this evening? With respect to, are our students healthy, are they doing well, are they engaged in school? Are we doing the best we can? Do you anticipate that we'll be able to measure some of that through the, the recent survey results?
I think, I don't know about measure, but better understand, I'd say. You know, we had some open-ended questions, like, you know, so what's going well this school year for you? What do you find particularly challenging? You know, and then this very last open-ended question, what else would you like us to know? So we just started to dig into some of that, you know, but it's, it's very interesting. And Sawyer, you know, you said it best, everyone was so gracious, right? So our students were really gracious, and even in that survey, many of them saying, thank you, you know, we know it's hard. It was so nice to hear that from students. But also, you know, just in the initial look that I've taken, it's a lot about connections and feeling connected to other students and feeling connected to the adults at school and about engagement. So that's really important. And I think, you know, when I think about the surveys we do now monthly with our faculty, we've done a recent survey with families as well, and that student survey, I think it's fair to say, everyone would prefer to just be back in school all the time. And we really miss that, and we feel that that's the best. But in the absence of that, you know, thinking about ways we can meaningfully engage with each other and not just kind of be there to say we're, we're all together, but I think those smaller group and one-on-one kinds of interactions are things that are more meaningful for most of our students. So we'll have to really take a closer look and do some text analysis of some of those open-ended questions. But one thing that was, you know, clear at a glance, you know, there was a question that was something like, how confident do you feel that you can do well in school this year? And the majority of our students do feel pretty confident that they can do well. So that was really reassuring to see. So hopefully we'll, we'll have more analysis for you very soon.
That's great, thank you. Is anybody else waiting to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, thank you again, that was terrific. We really appreciate the extraordinary effort that your team went to, to put that together. It was very, very helpful, we really appreciate it, and a lot of really positive signals coming out of that data. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Makes us feel very proud of all that you're doing, thank you. So if there are no further comments or questions, I think we are ready for public forum. So I invite community members who are waiting to ask questions, again, please to use the Q and A at the bottom of the Zoom. And in just a moment, when you're ready, Kim, I'm going to ask if you would mind helping us out by reading the comments that have come in this evening and any comments that were submitted to our public forum email address prior to this evening's meeting, thank you so much.
Thank you, Marjorie. I'll first read the Q and A comments, and then I'll do the public forum emails. First comment is from Carolyn Snell. Hi, Carolyn Snell here. In regards to ELA opt-out numbers, who is opting out? What percent of them are on I E Ps? What are, what are our average ELA scores for students who are on I E Ps? Also, are there state goals for percentage of opt-outs, and are we in state compliance? The next comment is from Erica Gleck, parent of two elementary students. This was such an interesting look at a lot of data this evening. Since our district was unwilling to consider the petition with 170 signatures, would you consider sending out a survey to take a closer look at how our families view their children as readers and writers? Do they receive private tutoring? Are families satisfied with the way they read, how they feel about reading, spelling, writing? This would be very valuable data. Now I'll go to the public forum emails. First is from Luba Wijn garder. Now that the science is in and we know that wearing masks and having some ventilation helps curb, curb COVID-19 transmission in closed spaces and very low percentages of cases are transmitted at schools because of masks and hand sanitizing, et cetera, why are kids not going back full-time? The next email is from Erica Gleck. In the words of George Bernard Shaw, the single biggest problem in communication is the illusion that it has taken place. In response to the last board meeting, I don't feel that we were effectively communicating. This isn't our side versus your side. These are not philosophical beliefs, this is science, the science of reading. To clarify, I have never expected that our district throws out the baby with the bathwater, that is, to switch gears and select a new curriculum. Nor do I think this is, this is an issue only for parents of struggling readers. We are simply asking for communication, discussion, transparency, and education. I'd agree, this is complicated, this is a complicated topic, and one where Catona Lewisboro could benefit from more education. Ms. Ford met with me only once in the fall of 2019, and I am pleased to learn that a few improvements were made. I'm hoping these improvements were based on that meeting and her willingness to truly listen. I'd agree, Board of Education meetings are not a format for these discussions, which is why we've been respectfully requesting an opportunity to discuss this complicated topic further, not only with our administration, but also with members of our board. The 25-minute PowerPoint presentation was chock full of information. While Mr. Selesnik felt it was, was important that information is presented in its entirety and with a context, I'd agree. However, there were components of that presentation that deserved rebuttal, clarification, and an opportunity to discuss, or at least an exchange. To that end, next week, the Catona Village Library will be putting forth a talk on the science of reading with Phyllis Burton. The Road to Reading will be held virtually on December 7th at 7:00 P. M. As a first step, I encourage our administrators to not only share this information, but to attend. I respectfully encourage our board members to do the same. You can obtain, obtain a Zoom invitation by writing to the head of Children's Services at the Catona Village Library. You are correct, there is no panacea, but education is the first step. When we know better, we do better. Please consider this opportunity to learn more. And then the last email is from Amy Smith Stewart. As we are all following the news of what's happening in our public schools across New York City, the state, and the country, as a district parent of a fourth-grade student, I am pleading with you to bring all elementary school-aged children back to their classrooms five days a week. It is not developmentally appropriate for any elementary-age child to be spending the majority of his, his, her, their learning online since March. Please do not lump third to fifth graders with the middle school, middle and high school age students. These children are under 11 years of age, and many, like my own, have been forced to use technology at a much younger age than they should. The transmission rate for this age group is exceedingly low. For the sake of our young children's learning, development, and mental health, please put this age group first and bring them back to school full-time immediately. If the city and many other local districts can do this in the, in the days ahead, we can tell. We need to ensure that all elementary children have the education and social skills they need to navigate this ever-changing planet. Let's not make what is already an inequitable world even worse for our next generation. Excerped from Monday evening's New York Times briefing. As the pandemic progresses, at least one consensus has emerged. Schools should bring younger children first, bring back younger children first. Mounting evidence has shown that in-person teaching of young children is safer than of older ones. And the elementary school years are particularly crucial for children's development in a way that can, can easily be replicated with online learning. And I will go back to the Q and A and see if there's anything else. Meredith Black is asking if her comment was already read. I don't recall seeing an email to the public forum email. So I don't have anything. That's all I have, I don't, okay. Right, so sorry, she just sent a copy of her email. I and many other parents were disappointed by your unilateral dismissal of our petition requesting a public forum to discuss parental concerns regarding reading and the formation of a literacy committee to review our reading curriculum within the context of the science of reading. I think there's more to it, but I don't see it yet. We are not surprised nor deterred by the district's response. This is a very important issue and needs an open discussion. We will, however, continue to bring this to the board. We are hopeful that you will have, will take, will all take the time to attend the presentation scheduled at the public library. It would be the first step in opening a real dialogue on this very important issue. Thank you. So I believe that is all of the comments that I have.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your help with that, Kim. And thank you to members of our community for your patience and for sharing your concerns and questions and comments with us. I think at this point, I'm going to close the public forum and the board will have an opportunity to come back into some discussion in just a moment. First, if you'll just bear with us, we're going to turn our attention to the consent agenda. I'm not aware of any items in the consent agenda that need to be voted on separately. And if that is the case, would somebody like to move the consent agenda, please? Thank you, Bill. Moved by Bill and seconded by Julia. Are there any questions or comments, discussion? Okay. If not, then why don't we go ahead and vote on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Great. Thank you. Seven zero. And this brings us all the way to item sixteen point oh one, which is an opportunity for the board to accept a very generous donation. And it's my pleasure to move this resolution. This is a gift that was brought to the board by Ms. Lynn Khan. It's a painting of the former district offices located at Shady Lane. And the painting was done by former superintendent of schools, Dr. Karen McCarthy. On Thursday, November nineteenth, Ms. Khan and Ms. Susan Simon, her attorney, presented Andrew and representatives from the district office. And I had the pleasure of joining them with the painting in person on the steps of what is now the current district office. And I think a photo might have been attached to this resolution so that board members could appreciate the painting. It's really beautiful. And I know that Andrew is going to find a place to proudly display it, either in the district office or where he thinks is most appropriate. But in the meantime, if someone would please second this resolution. Thank you so much, Liz. We really are so grateful to you, Ms. Khan, for bringing this to us and for your generosity. And if we can all please vote on the resolution, all in favor, please say yes. Aye.
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 Great. Thank you very much.
Happy to say the painting is already hanging in a very lovely spot.
Thank you, Andrew. Oh, that's wonderful. Hope that at some point we can have the opportunity to see it hanging. That's really terrific. Okay. And that brings us to seventeen point oh one, which is an opportunity for some board dialogue and discussion if board members had topics for tonight or wish to share their thoughts regarding any comments that were shared during public forum. I'll open the floor to you all. I will say that if I may, just while people are gathering their thoughts, that my recollection about the most recent survey that was administered to students was that it was for grades four to twelve. Is that right? And as we were going through some of the survey data tonight from our graduating seniors and alumni, I was thinking a little bit about how different it is to engage elementary school students in a meaningful opportunity to provide feedback. So it is an interesting suggestion that I think was shared, just something to think about in, in general terms and in specific terms with respect to how we hear from our youngest learners about their experience. It was something that was in the back of my mind even during the presentation this evening.
They seemed very happy to participate, I'll say that, which was very nice to see.
Great. Comments or questions?
So, Marjorie, I've been kind of processing the, the presentation that Mary delivered tonight, which again, was just excellent. Thank you for all the work that's gone into it and compiling all that information. It's very helpful, especially to kind of, you know, even if it's just once a year to kind of review kind of where we are, where we stand up in particular areas year to year and against other districts and so forth. And so my comment is that, you know, what, what a remarkable year to try to kind of, to take a snapshot, right? When, when no one's ever gone through this before and yet we still, it's incumbent upon you and incumbent upon us to try to understand. So I really applaud as well the effort to survey real time. And I'll just say that, you know, anecdotally, I've had the, the opportunity through my, my work to sit in on kind of focus groups and feedback sessions with high school students from other school districts, not in Connecticut, again, for my job. And they're, they're astounding, right? Every group is different. Every school is different. Every district is different. And the feedback is so valuable. And the one thing I'll say is with some of these groups that I've been a part of, you know, they would fall down with joy to get a survey from their administration asking how they felt about certain things or what was or wasn't working for them. Unfortunately, again, anecdotally, the sessions that I was listening in on, there was a lot of negativity towards their particular building administrators or districts or boards because they felt they were being treated more as wards as, instead of as stakeholders. And, and you're not doing that. And so I say that just to, again, to give you credit, but also I, I hope, you know, folks in our community understand how, how fortunate we are that you all are doing this kind of work at such a high level. So, you know, just a lot of appreciation for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Terrence. If nobody else is waiting to make a comment.
Can I just, Andrew, do you think that you'll do a coffee in the next, I don't know what timeframe relative to some of the survey information? I don't like, I know that the other coffees, you've kind of been able to tabulate kind of questions that people have asked, et cetera, prior to the coffee and really help to review questions and concerns. I, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm wondering if that might be something that would happen?
We'll, we'll definitely look to share the information that we've gathered from this, from the survey. I don't know if coffee, if coffee is the right format or if there's some other format. We haven't, haven't gotten to that point yet, but we'll definitely be looking to share the, what we've learned. Can I, can I just comment quickly on one of the, the questions? I don't want to, I don't want to leave Ms. Snell's question hanging out there about whether or not we're in good standing with the state in terms of the assessment. So we can certainly answer that question and say, yes. Where we are, we are, I think, I think the term is in good standing with the state in our terms of our accountability status regarding the state tests when they were last administered. I, I don't have any more information in terms of breakdown of individual opt-outs. Commit, commit, Commissioner of Education, and we know that they've changed over time. They've actually taken slightly varying positions in terms of their public stance on the opt-outs. Our current commissioner, it's hard to say, she was formerly the head of the Board of Regents and had her own positions that she would take publicly on the opt-out movement. So I don't think she's issued any statements since she's in her new role as commissioner. But in terms of our own standing, we are in good standing with the assessments.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is anybody else waiting to say something? Okay. Thank you all. I think then we can look ahead to our future meetings. As was mentioned earlier, the Sustainability Committee is going to meet tomorrow morning, eight fifteen. The Finance Committee is scheduled to meet Tuesday, December fifteenth at seven P M. The Board has one more meeting in the calendar year 2020. That's Thursday, December seventeenth, seven thirty P M. And then the Board will next meet in the new year on Thursday, January fourteenth at seven thirty P M. Did I miss anything? Then if not, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Moved by Rory, seconded by Bill. Thank you again to everybody. Be safe. Thank you for all that you're doing and we can vote to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Everybody. Thank you. Good night, everybody. Take care.
Good night.
Good night.